And approval of the agenda. Are there any additions or changes to the agenda? No changes. Any objections to approving the agenda as written? Hearing and seeing none, the agenda is approved. And Commissioner Scoggan, can you lead us in the pledge?
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Consent agenda. Minutes from the last. So.
We have the minutes, regular meeting minutes.
Okay, which is?
Just that, and then we don't have any introductions.
Okay. Bear with me. This is my second go with this here. There are no.
For the consent agenda?
Yeah. Minutes for the regular. And so what am I need? Okay. Regular meeting minutes, June 16th, 2025. Introduction for public hearing quasi judicial matters. There are no introductions for quasi judicial matters. Introduction for public hearing legislative matters. There are no introduction for legislative matters. Are there any objections to approving the consent agenda as written? Hearing and seeing none, the consent agenda is approved. Then committee reports, there are none. Agency staff reports, none. Land use classifications, none. Audience participation, you have three minutes per person for items not scheduled for public hearing. If there is anyone on the phone who would like to speak, please press star three. Nobody's on the phone? And is there somebody in the audience who would like to speak? Go to the, let's see, go to the in-person audience first to allow time for people on the phone? Well, are there any person in the audience who'd like to speak? Nobody. Anyone on the phone? No. Seeing and hearing, there are no other persons to be heard. Is there any objection to closing the audience participation? None. Audience participation is closed. Public hearing quasi judicial matters. Commission members may not receive or engage in any ex parte contact with the applicant, other parties interested in the application, or members of the public concerning the application or issues presented in the application. That one right there. And. Planning Commission quasi judicial actions. In order to ensure a fair process on planning commission decisions, the following shall be read by the Chair after the resolution title and before each quasi judicial case is heard. Based on MSB 15-08-150. Conflict of interest, ex parte contact. Do you or any member of your immediate family have a substantial financial interest in any property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize a foreseeable profit as a result of this decision?
Chair, I think you need to read the resolution first.
Oh, read the resolution, I'm sorry. Resolution 25-12 is a conditional use permit in accordance with MSB 17.60. Conditional use for the operation of a marijuana retail facility known as Silly Bear Cannabis located at 8620 West Gus Court. Tax ID number is 2760 Bravo 02 Lima 002, within township 17. North Range 2, West Section 8, Seward Meridian. Applicant is Jana Welton for Silly Bear Cannabis LLC. Staff is Rick Benedict, current planner. We'll get through this and see, I'll start this. What? Yeah, Commissioners, do you or any member of your immediate family have a substantial financial interest in any property affected by this decision? Or will you recognize a foreseeable profit as a result of this decision? Have you received or otherwise engaged in ex parte contact with the applicant, appellant, other interested parties, or members of the public concerning the application either before, during, or after this matter was submitted for decision?
Say into the record that no Commissioners.
Okay, no Commissioner, or the Commissioners have said they were not. Are you able to be impartial in this decision? All Commissioners agree. And Mr. Benedict, please provide your staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening. My name is Rick Benedict, current planner with the Development Services Division here at the Matt Sueboro. I'd like to take this opportunity to present the application, staff's report for the application of Silly Bear Cannabis, conditional use permit for marijuana retail facility. Subject parcel, which Silly Bear Cannabis proposed to operate is approximately one acre in size. Is part of the Sheil Solid Subdivision situated south of it, adjacent to West Gus's Court and north of it, adjacent to West Parks Highway. Access to the proposed operations from West Gus's Court via a driveway under Borough jurisdiction for which the applicant has applied for a driveway permit that is pending final inspection and permit issuance. The property lies within the Meadow Lakes Community Council area and Assembly District Number Seven area. Borough assessment records reflect that the subject property contains one commercial structure built in 2024. Staff confirmed this information during a site visit. Prior to the construction of the new commercial structure, the property was undeveloped and was used to store commercial vehicles for a period. The area surrounding the subject parcel consists of a mix of state and borough rights of way, as well as commercial, residential, and undeveloped uses. The proposed use will be located west of it approximately 345 feet from the closest residential parcel and approximately 59 feet east of the nearest commercial parcel. Public notice was conducted according to MSB 1703. The Meadow Lakes Community Council did not respond, and one comment opposing the proposed operation was received from the public. West Gus's Court, where the operation proposes access to the operation, is a borough maintained roadway with a local classification and can support light commercial traffic. The proposed hours of operation are 8:00 AM to 10:00 PM, Sunday through Thursdays, and 10:00 AM to midnight Fridays and Saturdays. No industrial equipment or process will generate noise, and the marijuana retail store will not generate odors. The operation secured a marijuana retail license from the State's Marijuana Control Board, which is currently in a delegated status pending the Planning Commission's approval of this permit. The applicant has indicated the operation will comply with state requirements regarding employee training, security, loitering and soliciting, and the prohibition of persons under 21. In addition, the operation will not offer onsite consumption or drive-through windows. The closest schools are approximately 6,895 feet northeast of the proposed use. An approved plan review from the Alaska Fire Marshal has been provided, indicating that the commercial structure will fully comply with all state of Alaska fire codes. Furthermore, the applicant has indicated that the use will provide the required parking spaces based on net force size and will meet ADA requirements. On June 26, 2025, staff conducted a site visit and observed that the proposed ADA parking spaces had not been constructed according to applicant's application narrative and site plans. Only one ADA parking space was observed to be constructed, and ADA signage had not been installed. On July 15, 2025, the applicant submitted an amendment to its original application narrative and site plans, which were provided to the Planning Commission members this evening as a handout. The amendment requested the approval of a modification to reduce the number of ADA parking spaces from two to one. ADA guidelines require that only one van accessible parking space be provided for an establishment with one to 25 parking spaces. Staff support the approval of this request and the modification. As a request, as a request and modification adheres to the ADA guidelines and Borough Code. Based on the results of staff's site visit, a condition of approval is recommended that prior to operating, ADA signage be installed according to ADA guidelines. The applicant's modification request and staff's recommendation have led to an amendment of the conditions of approval listed in staff's report and in the draft resolution within your packets. An amendment to the proposed condition of approval number two in Resolution 25-12 is reflected in your handout on page 15. Amending the conditions language from prior to operating, ADA parking spaces, access aisles, and ADA signage must be installed according to ADA guidelines, the application narrative, and the site plans. Proof of completion must be provided to the planning department. And proposed change is going to be two. Prior to operating, ADA signage must be installed according to ADA guidelines, the application narrative and site plans. Proof of completion must be provided to the planning department. An additional condition of approval is recommended that prior to operating, the operation obtains a final Borough issued driveway permit for access to West Gus's Court and provides proof to the planning department. In light of the application material, handout, and staff site visit, staff recommends approval with eight conditions of the conditional use permit to operate a marijuana retail facility at the proposed location. The staff resolution containing these recommendations can be found in your handout starting on page four. Mr. Chair, that concludes my staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Benedict. Does anybody have any questions of staff? I now invite the applicant to speak.
Thank you so much. Jana Welton, attorney for Silly Bear Cannabis. And I have Jenny and Eli Roller on my left and right, right and left. So this is a family venture. It's Carrie, Jenny, Ian, and Eli. Carrie and Jenny moved here about 11 years ago and invested in the Matt Sue Borough. Eli just bought his first house, what, last year, in the Big Lake area? So they're all here, they're all living in the Borough. Carrie's a sloper, so he goes back and forth on the oil fields, and Jenny's been a stay-at-home mom with her, you know, five sons that are now grown and flown. So they're just looking to invest in a new business in the Matt Sue Borough, and we agree with all of staff's recommendations and conditions. Happy to answer any questions, but I think staff did a really good job detailing the plan and the project.
Do any Commissioners have any questions of the applicant? At this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone on the phone who would like to speak, please press star three. Nobody's on the phone? And how about in person? If someone would like to speak, you've got three minutes. No one's here? Is there anyone in the audience? Like to speak, anyone? No one's on the phone, seeing and hearing? Any objections to closing the public hearing? Hearing and hearing none, the hearing is closed. Staff would like to respond to any public comments? There is none. Applicant, would you like anything else? Thank you. Commissioners, no more questions? Nothing? This time, I would entertain a motion for Resolution 25-10. Or 25-12, sorry.
Commissioner McCabe, I'll make a motion to move 25-12.
Commissioner Scoggan, I'll second that motion.
Commissioner McCabe made the motion, Commissioner Scoggan seconded the motion. And all those in favor of Resolution 25-12, say aye. 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 And. There's no objections to approving Resolution 25-12 as written. It's been approved. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Public hearing legislative matters. Read the resolution. Resolution 25-11, a resolution of the Matt Nuska Susitna Borough Planning Commission recommending the Matt Nuska Susitna Borough Assembly adopt the Fuller Lake Management Plan and an ordinance amending MSB 17-59, Lake Management Plan Implementation. Staff Rebecca. Rebecca. Oh, there you go, Scott Aug, current planner. And Rebecca, please.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. My name is Rebecca Scott Aug, current planner, Matt Sue Borough Development Services Division. The Fuller Lake Management Plan was initiated by the Fuller Lake Community in the summer of 2024 in response to growing conflicts around lake usage, consistent with the Matt Nuska, Matt Sue Borough Lake Management Plan process established under MSB 1524030C. This regulatory framework allows for residents to develop and propose surface use regulations tailored to specific lakes, provided that a majority of shoreline property owners support the initiative. Under MSB 24031, the Borough is required to ensure that all Lake Management Plan meetings are publicly advertised and accessible, which was accomplished via newspaper notices, email updates, social media posts, and dedicated project website. The regulatory process also mandates community-driven decision-making, supported by the Borough staff who facilitate meetings, provide research, and assist in drafting the plan. Any enforceable regulations emerging from a Lake Management Plan must comply with MSB 1759, which sets parameters based on lake size. Some background information on Fuller Lake is it spans 39 surface acres with an average depth of five feet nine inches. There are 29 parcels surrounding the lake, however, one parcel is owned by the Meadow Lakes Elementary School, which does not have voting rights. As a result, 28 parcels were eligible to vote throughout the Lake Management Process. A valid petition was submitted in June 2024, beginning the process. For a Lake Management Plan petition to be considered valid, it must show that over 50% of all shoreline property owners are in favor of initiating a Lake Management Plan. 61% of lake residents signed the petition. Staff mailed a certified ballot to each parcel indicating whether they are in favor of initiating the Lake Management Plan. The primary ballot, the primary ballot results are as follows. 28 ballots mailed, of those 28, 19 returned, 15 in favor of a Lake Management Plan, and four opposed. This resulted in 79% of the participants in favor of a Lake Management Plan. After this process began, the community engagement and drafting. The Fuller Lake Management Plan process involved a series of public meetings held between October and November 2024, supplemented by virtual attendance options. Despite extensive discussion, residents remained divided on the regulations of personal watercraft, jet skis, necessitating a secondary ballot to finalize this key regulation. The secondary ballot results are as followed. 28 ballots mailed, 17 ballots returned, 12 ballots in favor of banning personal watercraft, and five ballots in favor of a timeshare option. This resulted in 71% of returned ballots supporting a full ban on personal watercraft on Fuller Lake. Following the secondary ballot, a final ballot was conducted to vote on the entire Fuller Lake Management Plan draft and its proposed regulations. Quiet hours, 10:00 PM to 8:00 AM daily, no wake, 50 feet from shoreline, motor limit, maximum five horsepower for motorized watercraft, and personal watercraft at a full ban. The final ballot results, 28 mailed, 23 returned, 14 in favor of a Lake Management Plan, and nine opposed. Approval rate for the returned ballots was 61% majority. The finalized plan is codified through Ordinance 25-079, which amends MSB 1759 to formally implement the community-approved regulation. This ordinance is scheduled for assembly review and adoption. Borough staff recommends the adoption of the Planning Commission Resolution 2511 endorsing the Fuller Lake Management Plan. This recommendation is based on comprehensive public participation, regulatory compliance, and a clear majority of shoreline property owner's support. Staff recommended Resolution 25-11 can be found in the packet on page 248. Thank you.
At this time, we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. If there's anyone on the phone who would like to speak, plus press star three. No one's on the phone? And then we'll go to, go ahead and go to audience participation. Esther Huddleston, please. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Esther Huddleston. I live in Meadow Lakes. We have a lot of lakes. You restricted Beverly Lakes, and right after you restricted Beverly Lakes, now this management plan on Fuller Lake. I'm concerned, as a Meadow Lakes resident, that this is not going to stop, and they're going to continue on going to the next lake, and the next lake, and the next lake until there's a management plan on every single lake. We have over 200 million acres of land locked up in federal land. We have every lake locked up from Anchorage to Eklutna. We have lakes restricted from Palmer to Tulkeetna. We have the Palmer Flats restricted. People who enjoy motorized recreation are losing access. And I do not feel sorry for people who purchase lakefront property on lakes that are unrestricted because they have options. It's their responsibility to speak with the realtor, to tell them that I do not like motorized restrictions, so that realtor can take them to lakes that are currently restricted because they have options. People who enjoy motorized recreation, they're losing options. And I'm, and they always play the duck card, or the, we have the ducks nesting by the Palmer Wassala Highway, Cottonwood Creek, next to Wassala Lake. Motorized recreation does not bother them. If you don't shut down Palmer Wassala Highway, why would you shut down Fuller Lake for the nesting birds? We're just, we have people from Anchorage coming to the valley to motorize recreate. And then they buy gas here, they shop at restaurants, they shop and eat at restaurants. And we're just locking up more land. I think it's time to say no, and if you don't like motorized recreation, start looking for property on lakes that are restricted. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there any other, anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak? Hearing and seeing none, the public hearing is closed. Staff, would you like to respond to any of the public comments? Thank you. Commissioners, do you have any questions?
Who owns Fuller Lake?
Through the Chair. I'm not entirely sure who owns Fuller Lake.
I believe the state of Alaska owns Fuller Lake.
Potentially.
The residents don't own Fuller Lake, right?
Yes, you're correct.
What's that?
You are correct.
So. This is always, this is a pet peeve of mine, and I, you, you got one small group of people that live around that body of water, that are dictating what other people can do. What's the difference if I own a piece of property adjacent to state land, and I don't like people on four-wheelers, hunting moose, whatever they're doing camping out there? So does that block of people bordering that state land have the right to regulate that? I think the Lake Management Plan's illegal. I just have, I don't like them at all, and it's one group of people telling you, everybody else, you can't use this because we live here. They don't own that land.
As my job.
It's state land, it's state land. It belongs to the people, not that small group of people. The house that across the street doesn't get to vote, but the house on the lake does.
Is my job as staff, I am to follow the procedures that were adopted in Ordinance 1524031, Lake Plan Implementation, and that was what I did, was to follow the code that was adopted by previous assemblies.
I guess, I guess I really question the code. It's the legality of it. Because you are dictating, a small group of people are dictating what happens to a resource that belongs to the entire state of Alaska. So I'm just, that's all I'm saying. I just wonder if this should even be out here to vote right now? That's my only comment.
I have a couple. I have a question. There is, I do remember reading in the packet that there is public access to the lake. And I also noticed that there is borough property adjacent to the lake. Was the borough property one of the voting lots on the mailout?
No.
Okay.
Through the Chair to Commissioner McCabe. The borough property does not have ability to vote within the Lake Management Plan. The public access is available through the elementary school. When you hit the public access point, there is a fence. And to my knowledge, that fence has been locked, and the key through that fence has been obtained, you can obtain it through the elementary school. The Fuller Lake residents had no ambition on repairing or opening up more access to the lake beyond what is already there.
Anybody else?
I have, I'm not done yet.
Okay.
And I didn't mark which page this is on, but I noticed that on the petition that was signed by shoreline owners, shows 49 shoreline property owners, and they acquired 30 signatures, but the ballot that was sent out only went to 28 people, and I'm wondering why the disparity?
Through the Chair to Commissioner McCabe. On, in chapter, or title 1524031C, or three. It states, "Within 60 calendar days of receipt of a certified petition, the Planning Department shall mail numbered notices to all shoreline property owners." So it references shoreline property owners. Furthermore, within 152403111, it says through code, "One ballot per parcel will be mailed using certified mail." To my understanding, this was written this way because people own multiple parcels, or there might only be one person that occupies this parcel, but maybe four people that occupy this parcel to make it fair, will each parcel was allowed to vote. So it wasn't that each owner or sub-owner was allowed to vote, they all had to come a decision within that parcel?
So 49 owners, and does that mean like a couple? Are they counting 49 as in a couple owning a piece of property? Or how are they getting to 49 and then scaling it down to 28?
Through the Chair to Commissioner McCabe. 1524031, it does state shoreline property owners. This is the disparity, I think, in code that might not be recognized. So shoreline property owners, there probably are 49 people that own the 28 parcels. But through 152403111, it says one ballot per parcel. So there's 28 parcels, and assumingly that people are married or there's other shoreline. So just by what code says in 1524031, that was the procedure that was followed, correct?
I have one more question. So if I own 28 parcels on that lake, I could dictate what happens on that lake? Wow, that's, that's just wrong in so many ways, that one person could actually buy the property around the lake and, and tell the rest of the community that they can't use that lake anymore. Isn't that, that's something. I really think that, that this Lake Management Plan really needs to be pulled back and overhauled, so the community has input in it, not just one resident that could own 28 lots on that lake. I live right next to this lake. I don't go to that lake, but I know not that long ago, there, it was one big lot on one half of that lake, or one big parcel, then they subdivided it, and one person owned it at that point, and they could do whatever they want. So I really, I really, this is, this is one of my least favorite Borough things that I'd like to point out, because I just find it to be wrong in every way imaginable.
Through the Chair, this is Jason Ortiz, Deputy Director, Planning and Land Use. I would like to remind all Planning Commission members that on 1759.060, if you have a chance would like to remind all Planning Commission members that on 1759.060, if you have a chance to review it, you can see that the lake management plans are nothing new. That, so this, this was enacted 1999. And there's lake management, there's a long list of lakes that have lake management plans. The other thing I would also remind us, as a Planning Commission, if, if you don't agree, just like you guys are residents, you would need to consult with your assembly members or take a look at how you want to potentially look at as a land use issue on how you want to correct or change the rules that are in effect. Staff is just bound to do exactly what code says. And this is what is outlined in code.
Can, is it okay if I say?
Yeah, go ahead.
So, I'm inclined to agree with Commissioner Skoggin. This, this issue came up and it was my very first meeting, I believe. And I took a drive out there. I've lived here in the valley pretty much my whole life. So, I drove out there. And my wife and I and her daughter, we literally could not find lake access. The access we found was a tiny little trail that basically of this, right between two parcels, like this paper edge. But it said access, but you're actually on private property with that access. We drove around, tried to get in from the school, just based on what our state leads the country in. I'm not sure I want access to anything being with a school, an elementary school. Who knows who's going to be wandering there and has every right to because it's lake access. I, I'm inclined to agree with you, Commissioner Skoggin. I have a problem just locking up more and more and more. And I get that it's the, the code and it's just the code. But things are made to be changed. Things have been around longer than that and they change every day. Things have been around for a couple of weeks and they change. We're the valley. We're different than Anchorage. We're different than Fairbanks for a reason. You know, there's a lot of people who enjoy motorized activities and to just leave it up. And I, and I agree with the speaker. I think she's kind of right. You have a lot of lakes in that area. And it's domino effect. We've seen it. One goes over and the rest follow. I don't know if there's anything necessarily that we can do, but I, I, I just agree that something should be done. 28 people dictating to the valley that you can't do this anymore. I don't know. That just seems wrong on the cusp of it.
Thank you. You know, I, I agree with this. The problem with, that we're going to run into is we've got some incredibly wealthy people that are buying property up in the Matsoo. And let's say they roll into, to Anderson Lake, for instance, and buy everything around that lake, which this is not, this is not undoable. There's people that are rolling into this valley that are billionaires. It's happening right now. And then they shove everybody else out of the lake that's been recreating there for years. So, I'm, I'm in agreement with them.
Mr. Chair, I had a quick question. That's all right?
Sure.
This is Commissioner Allen. We talked about how many parcels are on lakefront. Do you know how many structures, like how many individual homes are there?
Off the top, through the chair to Commissioner Allen, off the top of my head, I cannot list how many structures are on there. The code doesn't require me to assess how many structures are on there. My job is, as staff, is to follow the code that is provided to me within those regulations.
Okay, you've been there, right? So, I mean, could you just give me a rough, I mean, are there 20 or are there 50? Like, just a rough idea?
Through the chair to Commissioner Allen, there was a packet provided that does have a vicinity map that you are more than welcome to check out. It is going to be on page 213 of your packet. This is a map created through our GIS department. Judging from the outside, it's, appears to be that there's typically one structure per parcel. But in regards of this aerial footage, I cannot tell you whether that structure is a garage, whether that structure is a house or a shed.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, let me know when you're ready for open comments.
Yeah. This time, our commissioners, do you have any questions? I guess we're done with that. At this time, I entertain a motion for resolution 25-11.
Commissioner Skoggin will make a motion for resolution 25-11.
Commissioner McCabe will second it?
Second it. And Commissioner Skoggin's made the motion. Commissioner McCabe seconded the motion. And Yeah, okay. What's up?
Any discussion?
Any more discussion?
Yes. Mr. Chairman, this is Commissioner Allen again. I've been, I've been super consistent on this issue as well for the last, I guess, four years that I've sat on this commission. You know, I don't necessarily have a problem with a lake management plan that has, you know, that we talk about some very reasonable things like, okay, during the weekdays, we're going to put quiet hours at this certain time. Some things like that, I don't find particularly offensive for the people that live on the lake to make decisions about. But something as drastic as telling people whether they can utilize their motorized vehicles, to me, is a bridge too far. And especially when you have a situation where you've got a motorized lake. People rely on the fact that it's a state-owned motorized lake. They buy jet skis, they buy boats, they put in docks, they, they make all of these, you know, expenses in infrastructure to, to enjoy the lake as it was meant to be enjoyed. And then the notion that some of their neighbors who have now maybe outgrown, you know, personalized watercraft, they don't like motorboats anymore, whatever, now that they can, they can just take that value away from these people, probably reduce their property values. I, I see that as just a taking that is just totally wrong and unfair. And so, I, I, I get to the same place as, as my fellow commissioners and as, as our speaker, our audience participants today, because I just think that that is a bridge too far for the government to, to reach and, and take those kind of recreational rights away from Alaskans. And I think that most people in this valley would have a real problem with it. So, I'll be a no.
The fact that-
Go ahead.
Commissioner Carpenter, the fact that it's basically six feet deep everywhere. To me, that seemed, where would you want to practice or allow your young kid to learn? Boatcraft, water safety, anything like that. I mean, that's the, to me, that's the perfect lake. It's six feet deep. Not, not that you can't drown, but probably less likely there than in Big Lake or Skeelak or Iliana, if you catch what I'm saying. I, that's, I agree. It's, it's a lot to just say no more when you bought that land and done it. I don't think the average person buying a, a home on a lake anywhere is, has the thought that I can't do boatcraft or personal craft on this lake. Like that, I don't think that enters most people's minds.
Anybody else? Would you like to make an amendment to the resolution? Hearing and seeing none. Are there objections to approving resolution 25-11 as written? Get a vote on that. All those in favor? All those against?
Nay.
Unanimously against?
Jason Ortiz and to the chair, you guys will need to draft a resolution with your findings. That'll need to be done now. So, if you guys want to discuss that, because that will need to go to the assembly. You guys are just advisory. This is going to go on to the assembly, but you, the resolution we've prepared is for it to pass. So, you, you will need to draft that now.
The Planning Commission to amend the mat-
To, if somebody could make a motion to say a resolution for Matsoo for a Planning Commission recommending Matsoo for assembly, you not, does not adopt.
And you guys do need to vote.
So, resolution 25-12, conditional use permit in accordance with MSB da-
25-11.
25-11, resolution of the Matnuuskas, Assistant Borough Planning Commission, recommending that we do not adopt the Fuller Lake, Lake Management Plan, and ordinance amending MSB 17.59, Lake Management Plan Implementation. So, we're making a motion not to adopt it.
Do we want to add some of the-
We want to make an amendment.
Mr. Chairman, do we want to add some language in terms of what was discussed here today about, you know, why we feel like it's inappropriate?
Yeah.
Or, I mean, I'm just-
No, go ahead, Commissioner Allen.
Well, so that would be some wherashes that we'd be throwing in there, saying-
Right.
You know what I mean? So, I'm just, just saying, is that, is that something that we want to entertain? But they, you know, the assembly has asked us to, to be a little more specific about why, you know, when we, when we, when we vote no on something, why it is we did that. I don't think that's unreasonable. I mean, they can, of course, listen to this, but
Go ahead.
Something about property rights or, I mean, what-
I think just, just limited the, the access, the rights of, of other Alaskans to have their say and, and use of this property. These state-owned assets, they're for the people. That's why we don't feel it's a good idea, right? Yeah, I, I thought, I, I think we were all pretty much kind of in board until it was like, you can't do this. Like, between the hours of, but to say, none. You can't use motorized, there's no personal craft, there's none of it. I think that most of us thought that was not okay. Like noise level between the hours of on the weeknights and whatnot, that seems reasonable.
I guess, and we have, we have noise ordinances in the valley that they don't not, they don't exclude jet skis or watercraft, right? I mean, so there's, those ordinances are here, there, I guess. You know, if it's a problem, I think we already, we're stacking rules on rules.
I'm looking for a motion to make an amendment to the title for resolution 25-11.
This is Commissioner Allen. I'll, I'll move the amendment of the title. And then
To, to add, does not-
Does not adopt the Fuller Lake Management Plan as written.
Commissioner Carpenter, a second.
Commissioner Allen made the amendment. Commissioner Carpenter seconded it.
Okay. Additionally, I, I think we should have, we're going to need to clean up these wherashes, but I think we should add one with some language like, a complete prohibition of motorized vehicles would deny Alaskans full access and enjoyment to Fuller Lake. Something like that. You know, whatever. That, that, I think is our biggest hangup is the, the, is the prohibition on motorized vehicles, right? Or is it the whole, I guess we should talk about that. Is it the whole notion of a lake management plan that we don't like? Or is it just, because to me, I'm hung up on motorized thing. That's my biggest thing. But, but I suppose maybe that's something we should talk about.
Go ahead.
This is Rebecca Scott-Hogg. Through the chair to Commissioner Allen, there is no full ban. It's only on jet skis that the shoreline property owners voted towards. This was their plan that they drafted and created. They voted towards that. But horsepower vessels, motorized vessels are different than personalized watercraft in code under definition. And you can still have personal watercraft on the, on the lake, just for clarification.
Okay. So, just to be clear, it's no, no jet skis, no personalized watercraft, and only a five horsepower engine. Is that right? Isn't that right? Okay. So, that's, maybe it's not a full ban, but it's essentially that. So, we can, we can change the language on that. We can say it's a full ban of personal watercraft. That alone is offensive enough to me. But however you guys want to word it. Or, I mean, maybe that's a discussion. Do you guys, are you just have a problem with the whole implementation of a lake management plan on a state, state lake?
I, I guess through the chair, I feel like we, I think in general, I personally have a, I don't like the water, the lake management plans. But I think we really got to kind of focus a little bit on Fuller Lake for now, right? Because that's what's on the table, I guess. But we're, but with the ideas, we really don't want this spreading too, right? So, this is the start. And then I think we need to turn this back. But then we need to get to work with the assembly, right? I mean, Rebecca's did a great job and she did everything within her right, like she's supposed to present it to us. But and, and that's what, I guess, that goes back to this, that's what, the lake management plan's there now. And she's going by what's there. But we're, we're really saying it's just, it's really not right. You know, so we need to, I, I feel like we need to push this back. And then the assembly needs to take a hard look at this, because it is taking our rights away. So, I don't, I think we need to kind of focus our, ourselves on this particular one, I think.
All right. So, going through this, do you want to go step by step through these wherashes? So, this first one here that I've highlighted identified that the use of personal watercraft and motorized watercraft has created hazard conditions to nesting birds and other non-motorized users. Are you looking to strike that entirely?
Yes, sir. Strike that entirely.
And then, so the next where, and this is just starting after all the claims and positions have been made by the community. So, this is just getting into these wherashes following that. That's where I started. So, this, whereas the use of personal watercraft on Fuller Lake shall be banned and motorized watercraft restricted to five horsepower to protect against the shoreline erosion, habitat disturbance as well. Are we striking all that?
Yes.
So, it says here, the Fuller Lake, Lake Management Plan acknowledged the will of the residents by concluding that all requested regulations in the final mail-in ballot, including quiet hours, no wake zone 50 feet from the shoreline, motorized watercraft uses are restricted to maximum five horsepower. So, is banned. So, strike all that?
Yes.
Okay. So, this is a statement of fact. It seems that they're in favor of the lake management plan. So, did you want, I, I remember hearing you say that you wanted to have a, a specific whereas stating something?
Yeah, I, I just threw out some verbiage that, you know, we use, but, you know, something about whereas a total personal watercraft ban and a ban and a, a five, five horsepower engine, boat engine restriction, boat engine restriction on, on, on a state, yeah, lake, state-owned lake, would impermissibly reduce the access and enjoyment of Alaska residents to Fuller Lake? Yeah, I just said Alaska residents. Yeah, because you're right. I mean, it's a state-owned lake. It's, it's just as much a guy from Gnomes Lake as it is a guy from Wassals Lake.
So, did you want to read that and see if it needs to be edited?
Horsepower boat engine limit, I would- Uh, uh, horsepower boat engine limit, I would say.
Okay.
Reduce the access and use.
And I would say would impermissibly or, uh, unreasonably, unreasonably, maybe, unreasonably reduce the access and enjoyment. Alaska residents on Fuller Lake, sure. Enjoyment of Fuller Lake.
Okay.
Sure. It should be on a state-owned lake would unreasonably reduce the access. Uh, 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 the, uh, maybe the state-owned, you know, just to point out that Fuller Lake is state-owned in the whereas is all I wanted to do.
On this state-owned?
On this state-owned lake, yeah.
But we, we probably feel the same on any state.
Yeah, but I think he's right, though. We need to focus.
Focus on this one.
Yeah, yeah.
So then do we say, instead of enjoyment, should we say use?
You could say.
Cause that's what it's.
Access, use, and?
Does not would be after assembly.
Yeah, it's okay. And so then it's saying, now therefore be it resolved that the Mat Nuskas Assit in a Borough Planning Commission hereby recommends the Borough Assembly does not adopt the Fuller Lake, Lake Management Plan. And be it further resolved that the Mat Nuskas Assit in a Planning Commission hereby recommends the Borough Assembly does not adopt the ordinance, um, with it. Is there any other changes you guys would like to make? Would you like to review it again? So here in the title, we had, uh, updated to say that it does not adopt. And then, uh, it's just a, uh, and then as written, the rest of this, um, information here is just, uh, describing the process and the rules. Participation. It, it, it retains the, um, sentiment of the property owners that participated. Um, and then it, and then it, um, rejects any of the, it removes any of the, um, restrictions. Um, then, um, states again about the participation in the, in the process. Um, but then it includes your, um, submission as a of the total personal watercraft ban and a five horsepower boat engine limit on the state-owned lake would unreasonably reduce the access, use and enjoyment of Fuller Lake by Alaska residents. Then it goes on to state that you do not adopt it, um, um, this ordinance. You don't, or the, or the lake management plan.
You know, one other thing I could bring up by addressing this five horsepower thing, when, when a float plane is on the water, it is a watercraft. It is not an airplane anymore. And so five horsepower would knock that out of there. So you wouldn't be able to land your float plane on that lake anymore.
Aren't you, I thought you guys were protected by some overriding federal law, something.
When you're, when you're on, on floats, on the water, you have to abide by Coast Guard regulations. So.
Yeah, I understand. But isn't there, I thought there was a federal law that would allow you to land on any state.
On any. Is that right? Okay.
Chair, is it too late for a question?
Hmm?
Is it too late for a question?
Go ahead.
Well, um, in the process of reading the, um, the packet, I noticed the mathematics of calculating the percentages is based on those who responded and not on the residents overall. And I'm wondering if that's in code somewhere, if that dictates it, because then it makes it look like they were extremely in favor of something when it was a small percentage participating. Like if you do the math, it comes out to forty-three percent or fifty percent of overall. So, the non-responses skew the data to make it look like there's more favorable, um, outcomes.
Through the chair to Commissioner McCabe, um, yes, you are correct. Um, but in code, in fifteen twenty-four zero-three-one, um, section eleven, it does state, the notices shall state that a lake management plan will be brought to the Canyon Commission and Assembly. If more than sixty percent of all responding shoreline property owners are in favor of lake management plan, it does address the respondents. They are not forced to participate in the lake management plan. So the people that did participate is what you count. It does state that in code.
And just a follow-up, and that does not, um, count the un, um, occupied parcels that may still be available for future sales, correct?
Um, through the chair to Commissioner McCabe, all parcels are occupied around Fuller Lake.
Any, any objections to, uh, the amendment? Hearing and seeing no objections. What's that? And now we need to, to, uh, do a, a motion for, entertain a motion for resolution twenty-five dash one-one. As amended, right? As amended. Somebody?
Commissioner Skoggin will make a motion for twenty-five dash one-one as amended.
Commissioner Carpenter will second it.
Commissioner Skoggin's made the motion. Commissioner Carpenter, uh, seconded it. Read this thing now. We don't need to. Any objections? None, no objections. Red, resolution passes. As amended. Correspondence, there is none. Unfinished business, none. New business, none. Commissioner business, uh, do commissioners have any questions about future agenda items included in the packet? You do? No, no? Upcoming planning commission, uh, agenda items? Okay, and, uh, how about we're down to director and commissioner comments. Commissioner Skoggin's.
I guess, I just, yeah, I, I guess, just real circle around here real quick, the, the lakes management plan. You could actually have a lake property with people that only live in the state dictating what happens. You know, there'd be enough out-of-state owner rec, you know, seat, or second home type owners, you know, that I, I just see a lot of problems, like things, we grow, things change. Ninety-nine was a while ago now. Um, it's, it's definitely time to overhaul this lake management plan.
And Commissioner McCabe?
Well, just thanks to staff for your patience with us as we wade through this.
Commissioner Carpenter? No comment? Commissioner Collins, here, Commissioner Allen?
Uh, yes, I, I want to say thank you to staff. Um, and I certainly hope you didn't take our frustration with this body of law as some sort of aggravation towards you, because that was certainly not how any of us intended it. Uh, this is, this issue has been, uh, sort of a burr in our saddle for, uh, many years now. Uh, and it's something where we're almost unanimous on this. Um, it's a very unusual situation, actually. Um, where we would be unanimously against, uh, the staff recommendation on something, and it really has nothing to do with, um, any of the staff's work here. It's just, we think that, um, it's, it's past time, uh, for an updating of this, uh, area of law here within the borough. And I think, um, if you were to talk to the average, uh, valley resident on the street and, and explain this issue and the current state of things to them, they would agree with us. So, it's incumbent upon us to talk to our, our friends on the assembly and see what we can do about, uh, making some real change. Um, so we don't just have to go through this exercise all the time. But otherwise, very good meeting. Suns out. Have a great night, everybody.
Yeah, Commissioner Carpenter.
I, I'd like to thank the audience participation. It, a lot of people don't seem to really come to these meetings and your voice made a difference. Seems like, um, the internet is full of a lot of meetings like this, mostly school board, but just a lot of meetings where voices typically don't get heard, and yours was, and it made a difference. And I think that's pretty cool. And I'm really happy with the meeting that we had. We accomplished a lot.
Thank you very much for tolerating me. And as everybody knows, Commissioner Fernandez took a job in Seattle, I guess, last week and well, do you guys all know that? Well, some, well, you do now. Commissioner, yeah, always. Yes, so anyway, he has moved and we wish him well. He was great at doing this and, uh, we'll miss him on this board and, uh, uh, we're, we're going to have an election at the next meeting, so you guys can ax me if you'd like to. So, anyway, good night. Thank you. And, uh, I call, go ahead. Oh, Wade has a comment.
Thank you. Uh, yeah, I'd like to thank Development Services' staff, Rick and Becca, for their dedicated work to the community in this commission. Um, since Commissioner Fernandez has resigned, as you said, I'd like to thank him for his role as chair and his history on other commissions and service to our community. Um, like you did state, uh, elections for the new chair will be held on August fourth. So please be sure to consider who you'd like to nominate or to put your name in the hat. I'd also like to provide a reminder that the proposed water body setback ordinance is scheduled to come before this commission for consideration on the August fourth meeting. I respectfully request that all commissioners take the time to thoroughly review the ordinance in advance of the meeting. And if there's any questions or points requiring clarification, to please do not hesitate to contact Alex Strawn prior to the meeting date to ensure that all matters are clearly understood and appropriately addressed. And, um, while the commission may at its discretion defer action on the ordinance to a subsequent meeting, final action must be taken no later than Au- August eighteenth to avoid delaying transmittal to the assembly for their consideration. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And with that, I call this meeting adjourned at seven oh three. Thank you.